The border, um, so the housing board appeals. I'm Andrew Barbadeer. This is Jason Yalvin and Linda Maloud. And, uh, we are, this is a public hearing for 95 Huntington Road. It's a request for a finding under the zoning by law 5,107, annual variance under 6.2. Um, by Barbara Woolsey. It's a, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, we believe, on the, on the south side in residential zone. And, uh, again, it's proposing construction of a screening porch to be attached to the front side of her house. And, uh, she's looking for existing 48 feet to 38 feet. I guess, Barbara, you want to just tell us what you're, tell us where you're at, uh, what you're having going, what you're looking at there?
Um, we'd like to build a screening porch because, um, our house to live in, it faced the north, which is a very beautiful view. And, um, I didn't realize that there was a bylaw that said that we had to be 50 feet back. But it turns out that the house was built in, um, I think it was 57. And I was told that the, the, the new one, the bylaw that said they can have to be 50 feet back was instituted in 61. So it was a pre-existing house and it's not quite 50 feet back. Um, and so I, our, our builder applied for a permit and it was denied. And he said that we had to appeal for a variance. And so, there we go.
Okay, so, um, could we even have a lot of, uh, so, uh, let me back up for a second. So we, so you did, so, um, I discussed with you when you were going to file them. I think we did it as a request meeting, finding any variance. Um, I've later come to realize that I don't think that that is the correct way to do it. I don't think that will. I think that's sort of the way we previously doing it, which is like a little bit of like a building suspended. I think the issue with a, uh, non-conforming, pre-existing structure is now considered set to be addressed as a finding. Uh, and the criteria that we'll be looking at for the finding are first, whether the, um, requested change, extension or alteration is any more than conforming. Um, and second, we'd be looking at, if, if the answer to that is yes, then we'd be looking, um, at whether the change, condition, alteration is any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, so those are kind of the, those are the two, like, finding things. I think from a sort of preliminary standpoint here, um, and I realized that we did not ask for a consent meeting at the outset. Um, I think in a situation where it's close like this to the 50, but I think it probably makes sense to have a plot plan done, uh, just a survey property to just, uh, the boundary line and where the, where the house sits there. Sometimes there's just a lot of different variables that could come into play here. The road looks like where it is, but that might not actually be the boundary of the road. So, um, you know, because there's different setbacks, right? Like the road could actually be wider, like the paved part that we see. So, um, what, what I think we should do is I think we should continue the hearing and, uh, allow, allow you guys to do a, um, survey property in terms of variance. And just confirm the location of the, of like the setback where it is. It's going to be right on, and it looks like from the pictures that it's lost. And then that, then if we can confirm that, that the closest part of the house is 48 feet, we, I think you are building closer to the road. So I think the first finding would be that it is, um, more non-conforming because you're building closer, you're putting something more into setback. Um, so then I think we'd be looking at the, um, the second stage of review would be whether that, you know, addition of the screen portion. And if we fire that, uh, if, if, um, that's kind of how I see it. Jason, the 48 feet you're, you came to, was that from the contractor that you measured?
I actually, it's all on the, it was, um, and maybe it was conversation with you. Then my initial conversation with some intern zoning board, when I, the first time that I called about getting variance, um, the person who I spoke to said, and it looked like he was looking at some sort of a plot plan. And he said to me, it's actually, it's 48 feet away now.
So that was, that was me.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's where I got.
And, uh, that, so, so it does, so there is a plan that, a hand-drawn plan from, I believe it's from a builder. And so, just, uh, it, it, it looks close, but I, but I, I didn't have it for, I don't, I don't know.
Basically, we need more evidence. We need more information in order to make it exist.
So I agree with what Andrew was saying. I think continuing it and allowing him to get the accurate plot land slash survey done, that would, we can first establish that the house is not a pre-existing non-conforming. And then we can go from there.
Um, can I just ask a question? Um, what is the difference in procedure if it's 48 feet versus if it's 50 feet? How, how does the process go?
So if it's, if it's, if it's 48 feet, then you'd be pre-existing non-conforming and we would be looking at whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, and the existing, like, conditions of the neighborhood. If you say you're 51 feet, then, then you'd be looking for a variance. And, and the variance is a, is like a, a higher standard. We, we would have to be looking at whether you, whether you have some type of hardship, whether the, whether it's, whether the property is situated somewhat differently than other properties for some reason. And whether the, um, hardship is caused by, like, some of the conditions, there's like specific conditions to, to get a variance. It's like whether there's soil conditions on the property, the shape of your property. Like, I know your property has a hill, so there could be, there could be something like that, for instance, where you say, well, I can't build on that side of the property because there's a steep hill.
Well, we're at weapons on the backside. I can't approach upon this.
No, half my property is solid rock, so I can't. You know, there's different situations that people have with their properties that could be grounds for a variance. Um, but, I mean, basically, basically, I've said that you're hoping that it's going to show up that it's 48 feet. Is you'd rather be pre-existing non-conforming than be looking at variance. Which is not to say that it's impossible, but that would be, if, if we come back and, and like I said, they're saying, it said that the closest to ours is 51 feet, then we could have discussion about, about the variance. But at that, you know, at that point, it's really different. Your property is, for some reason, shouldn't happen.
Your original blueprints, there was a plot, you blocked the, you blocked, what was that, so I haven't quit or?
Yeah, I, I mean, like, if.
Let me help you out there. I'm a, I'm a surveyor and I'm not looking for work. I'm also on a slick board in town, so I'm definitely not going to offer my services to you. But the, the accuracy necessary for them to make a decision only can be ascertained by an actual survey. So they, as Anna said, they need that information so we can determine whether they're going to make a finding or do that, or find a variance. And in order to protect that and protect the town, they have to do the right thing. Unfortunately, that, we have to go get the survey done.
So if there's one, you, 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 so it's not a bad.
I don't know what it is. I'd have to look at it, but I think it would make sense to get it done today so that there's no question.
Basically, we don't require an ask for a final, you know, final inspection, so it wouldn't be 100%.
Maybe the house was, you said, right, so that would be, that would be.
Oh, because they wouldn't have those. Cause I, I did look on, uh, I looked on the, um, mass land records and there was many of the primary transactions from the clients.
There's a, there's a survey, the original survey done up there a lot. But they would show the house, there's a piece of the lot. Yeah, so that's all that exists out there.
As part of the campaign, as part of the campaign.
And the part of what you said about it being detrimental to the neighborhood, if indeed we're within the 50, that, that verified, what, what's the determination of detrimental?
Just the, I mean, it would be about like how far you're looking to go, how much closer the road is going to go from how, how, how close you are to start out. It would be, uh, whether there's, whether it's going to be a hazard for people traveling on the road because they're going to be too close to the road. Maybe like they get hit by a car there, but they'd be like, or, you know, things, things like that. It could be aesthetics, it could be that, it's okay.
So there's, which would be the, be a letter saying we don't like.
Yeah, or it could be, or like it just could be if you were in a, in a, could be your letter saying it's going to limit my view of the road, the audience, the, the road. It's just, the idea is that the, the, the current neighborhood has, uh, you know, potentially your house being, uh, non-conforming and probably has other houses being non-conforming. So what we would do in that situation is we, we, we look at the totality of the situation and we say, you know, if you put, if you had a 10-foot deck on the front of your house, how does that change? Changes the, the overall non-conformity of the neighborhood. I think the, uh, the, the, obviously, the, the.
And how, determination was made by you guys or is that?
No, that determination was made by us. We would take into account whether butters have, whether, if many butters are concerned about the project or whether they, that's, you know, something that we would, that we would take into account. If you, um, I, I know we sent out the, uh, notices to the butters. Uh, have you heard, have you heard anything from anybody on, on the project? Does anybody have any?
Uh, there was one neighbor who called and was just curious as to what was going
So Noah bothered you, so?
Yeah, or. You guys are, you guys are the, you guys are the last house there before a big, like, open lot, so you really have, well, you have a butler.
The field.
The field there, yeah. Um, and so you really have, I guess, the butters behind you, um, and was really, what's, what's.
There's the two butters, the butters behind us, next to us, and across the street from us. And then the, the farmer who owns the field next to us and across the street. He had two butlers, B. and S., they were two seven feet. I think those were.
And, and when we, once we get the plot plan, then how long, until that point?
So we will, we'll set another, we'll, I don't know how long, I'll just take a good while here, remember?
And, um, we're like really busy right now, so it's going to be a couple of three weeks. You set a date and then they, they.
So, so we'll pick, yeah, so, I mean, we'll pick a date tonight to keep the hearing going with continuation of the hearing. So we'll pick a date and then it'll be up to you guys to try and get the, um, to get the plot land done, up, you know. And I think, I do think, you know, I, this is, I'm, it's a little bit, I, I will say that, uh, I shouldn't have asked for this at the beginning, um.
You've been a wife, isn't it? And it's been built, but you haven't joined, but it.
I hope we can do, Noah, set a date, see if you can get the survey plot done in the meantime. Expecting we've been tackled with that.
So you three are the GVA?
The ones who's behind the curtain.
And you're, you just had yours to like firm something?
Yeah, I sat in the beat.
Survey.
Making hearing, or.
Survey. Wow, I'm going to be so excited to live inside of it. And you're to actually.
Yeah.
You also are.
For coming weeks.
That's interesting. Choose a day.
Let me think about it.
I wanted to be kind of, you know, like, you're doing your second job, but.
Certainly, your property, isn't that just like numbers?
Yes, it is. And it's, it shouldn't be a big deal. So.
You, you would reach and figure out and you're paying me some other disabled.
Exactly.
And you lovely, big building here, look good. Oh, oh, you're, you're free hearing as well.
Oh, we've been.
So how about, uh, July, July 18th? Jason.
That one more.
For I'm for month 5th.
That includes sufficient time.
We're going to iron them the 25th for a month.
So July 18th, we're going to.
Yeah, so we will continue to, otherwise you want to kick it to.
Is that time, not that they're going to survey or not?
They don't want to go in that mode.
So, well, that's, that's four weeks.
It's going to be eight weeks.
To the 4th, 11th, 18th. I mean, this is, I mean, let, try, if they can't get it, then we can always, you can just bump it, bump it again, right? Well, I, I mean, I, I assume we'd rather, it's easy enough to bump it again. Does the 18th work for you folks?
Yeah.
What could be better than.
I don't want you to see my calendar.
I could have any fun.
So, people say we are the, we're about to work now. So I'll make a motion to continue, uh, the hearing for the request of a finding to the agreed time of July 18th at 7:00 P.O.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. All right, folks, July 18th, 7:00 P.O.
Well, we know about the rescue.
You guys mentioned you were staying.
I don't think that, I don't think you have as much fun as. Oh, now, I'm excited.
Thank you for your work, the work you do.
I do like you, sir.
If you decide you don't.
Assuming you guys. Forgive your time.
Thank you for doing what you do. Have a good night, everybody.
And Andrew, we can blame it to you.
You can't go away there.
I know. I know, hope you're back till the end of August.
Good for you. What time's the next hearing?
7:15, so ready to go. I stack them, I stack them. All right, so 7:20, so we will call the second hearing to order. This is, uh, not a public hearing, this is just a open meeting here. And this is the request for a finding on 59 Mountain Road Road. Uh, the request by Tom Harris for a finding under, had his own by law, 5,107. In addition to the rear, pre-existing non-conforming single family home located at 59 Mountain Road Road. Um, Mr. Harris did, um, submit some, uh, plans that I, I did circulate to, to everybody. Did you, did you, yeah. Um, Mr. Harris is here, so why don't you talk to us about what you, what your plans?
Uh, we have a permit here. Our 18th, 7th, which is entirely within setback. And, uh, we're very much likely to look there, but it's, 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 it's better, very, 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 so. So we'd like, uh, some living space, a bedroom, a bedroom on the ground floor. Still quite small, but, uh, quiet. Opposed design does not personally, the setback is apparently behind the, the front of the house. If you can use that non-conforming here, so back, it would be literally the setback itself, but, uh, it wouldn't make the setback. We also think that there is no house. There was some farms that are adjacent to us. Uh, yeah, there's, uh, nothing, they don't, it was in the neighborhood.
So again, this is, uh, so again, this is, uh, one of these issues that we were just discussing that, uh, previously, there's sometimes a brief, briefly says, as variances And I think the two criteria we can make a decision on are whether this is any. I agree that the, the addition is on the back. Definitely is a, not, not conforming. I think if we make a determination, that's not a problem.
So in the absence, public, public?
Well, I'm a somewhat of a neighbor and I don't know, I want him to be living in with me. But other than that, I wouldn't trouble him. It seems to make sense. So, so above board according to everything we've read in the law and.
It's appropriate. It's actually, so it's, this is one of those examples too, it was kind of interesting. I was telling, um, Italian before, is that part of, part of the, the reason they're, you know, it's findings says that they want people to be. Except if you try to make every old home into a, um, conforming property. So it's interesting, I mean, so we example of that, that.
Section or?
Are you having like a? I, I think it makes sense to me. I don't think it makes sense. It's all I said, you. Yeah, one for a finding that, uh, I think. Plan has shown on the, uh, submitted, the, the addition has shown on the submitted plans is a no or non-conforming in the existing.
So.
Seconded?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're looking quite nice. Start digging.
Start digging. Who doesn't want to go find?
I've seen a nobbing inspector.
Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have fun.
Have a good one.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I put 7:30 on there for, we have to review, approve our previous Is that recorded? I think it's not yet. Or it's part of our meeting, I don't know.
I sent a draft and I won't drop that to you in writing, so I have the correct printout that you want to see, but I have some email.
Yeah, I'll give you that myself. That's fine, and maybe other day I'll bring that up. Thank you. Um, I mean, I think we could discuss it in general business.
Well, now, the most important general business in my mind is what we were just talking about before the hearing, which is to, you know, have some consisting, consistency. Requests, permits, and, 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 we had variances. It was really difficult to decide, you know, in many cases, the ability to decide what was the voluntary, non-conforming, the level of variance was fully met. Variances should be, in my mind, should be hard to hear because they are, will change in, in our boundaries. And, um, we've had a variance denied for 10 feet. We've had a variance accepted for nine, you know, resulting setback of 10 or a resulting setback of nine. They both met different conditions. Um, and each one has to be on its own and decided, but, um, this, thank you, Andrew, for sending that Supreme Court decision around, or court decision around because it was helpful to see that we need to dig into our bylaw and somehow have protocol for handling the process of finding permits and variances. We need a protocol.
And I think, I think it is important because there, um, because there's so many old houses in town and I think we should have a handle on that. And I, we need to be able to, like, all time to, like, figure it out. But obviously, we're trying to, like, do, just do things like in a reasonable way, like where you are, for just like an S. As needed, boards, so we can, we don't necessarily. Doing like every single thing that's happening with, uh, somebody, with every house, if somebody's putting new windows on, on Middle Street, right? But like, so that's where, you know, I think, I think it makes sense to have a good framework on, on, and what is, what needs to come to us and then. And then time, then time will be able to also, like, refer stuff to us if it's, it's close, you know? If somebody's building a second story on a house that's too close to the road, I don't know what you think, then, I guess you're putting more square footage close to the road, but maybe that's going to be like something that time will get referred with. So for instance, so like with the previous case of 59 Mountain Road, that was pretty clear that it was not more non-conforming. Is that something that will still come before us or is that something time could go ahead and say?
Yeah, that would be the best, probably determine that I could give that okay. I mean, you voted for, one, one member has permission to just review it at Tuesday meetings, whichever, whoever, D., does it, D. the chair?
Based on that Supreme Court case that you sent, it basically says that these people, they're not making things any more non-conforming, they are allowed to do what they're doing by right, you know? So by right, to me, means that you can do it, that the zoning board is not necessary in the process, but.
I'll go again.
And I think that based on the, the coordination meetings we have every week. Based on the coordination meetings we have every week, that something can come up, and if there's concern, then okay. Pass a bargain fee.
I mean, I think the meeting has to necessarily be, I think if Randy has a concern, if Randy says, well, if you think about it this way, the way that rose, like we talked about. One at one point where, like, somebody was building a line with a house, but the road was curving, right, or whatever. And so, you know, like, if somebody brings up a concern like that, I don't think it necessarily has to be. A zoning board member that says, but we want that to come to us, if someone on the planning board says, I think that that's, you know, very close to a call or whatever. But so I think, like, we have people to bounce it off of, uh, I don't necessarily know that it has to be. Like a formal thing where I, where, you know, either Linda or Jason says, yes, you can, like, you know, give you permission to do it, but I think if you said, what do you guys think about, because. I think it can be, like, something that's done through, like, a little bit of, like, informal discussion or about things, right? Um. Then for like the asset right part, and then for the other ones. So. That, what I like, and this is like, I brought this up on one of those planning calls, is that. What I, what I would like us to try to get away from as a board is, like, I think we are. More like, you guys talking about that we, like, have a lot of power. In terms of what we can do, but we operate from, like, different bases of power. And we're always trying to, like, give people reasonable help, and like. Well, like, when we are operating out of, like, the variance, out of our, like, variance powers, then. We're in a vulnerable position there, and all, I think all it's going to take is for some neighbor, like, a neighbor might not show up at the hearing, but get upset about it, or whatever, just somebody who wants to be a troublemaker. They could, could, like, give us a lot of trouble, like, even though we're trying to do the right thing, and we're saying no neighbors are complaining or whatever. Uh, I, I want us to, like, be focused on how we can be operating from, like, our, like, strengths. And from, like, a place where we're decked in town and technically we're going forward from. If people attack, right, so like, that's where, that's like why I was interested in this finding process, is that, like. I think that this is like a way to deal with a lot of these, a lot of these, like. Small issues that come up when people are building near sidewalks and everything. And I think it also is like a way to, to come to conclusions in a way that doesn't, like. Without staying out there.
Something else to ponder. You use the red basketball, my friend's soccer, you've played sports. But the ref is in charge. The job is to make the right. So that everybody lives happily ever after, and you're going to make somebody happy, you're going to make somebody bad. But you do the best thing you can do to play by rules, whatever the rules, whatever the game is, the game's got different rules. So, you know, you, you, you gotta take the emotional part out of it. As I said yesterday, nobody wants to be bad guy, you can't do that. But sometimes we have to.
Because. But, but I think so, I think sometimes, like, we, what, what we were actually doing is, like, um. We were doing, like I said at the beginning of this meeting, we were doing variances that were actually in this, like, finding neighborhood. But they're like, but then you're kind of really, like, really grasping for what, like, a variance is in that situation, and I think ultimately that, like, hurts us. To do that, because then it does open you up for somebody else to say. Well, no, you denied one. Yeah, right, right, and you think you're just going along and doing the best you can, but, like, you should make sure, that's like a very specific tool, so you shouldn't, like. Use that tool like over and over again.
I don't think, you know, everybody understands, people don't understand what a pre-decision has negative effects of that case. Now, interpretation is involved, you can't actually follow any rule of the law exactly, because the. Definitions sort of evolved in that particular situation, I'm thinking about topography of variance. You know, that's a real squishy issue, trying to determine if topography creates a hardship. So there's, you know, there's tax agreement, there's the law, and then there's how we decide what's fair.
Isn't that how the zoning system was set up first, they used creative legacy, and you create avenues for individual specific, you know, variances. Within what law, like, depending on each set. And so, like, I, Linda's right, like, I know we don't set precedent, like, that's like the first thing they told us, is like, don't, like, you're, you're viewing each thing on an individual basis, but. I mean, I don't know, just in terms of, like. Customer service to the town, and people want some type of consistency, and I think, like, deserves some type of consistency. So even though you could say, hey, we can just make up our mind, whatever you want, like, but it doesn't. How are you going to figure out whether it's detrimental or remember, it's like, I don't know, you should. You should, like, you think about other things that you've said are non-detrimental, or other things you've said are detrimental, or whatever, right, and you should, like. It would be okay to treat a porch differently than a thousand square foot addition, somebody's trying to do, or whatever, right, like, so, I mean, I, I think.
It's tricky though, we turned down a. Varyance request by a town by the seniors. The nine feet. And we, you know, we approved one of them. How do you explain to people the reason behind each of those decisions? It's not your book.
It's difficult to explain, but like, I remember that case where others came and expressed concern about a structure being built so close upon the line, and we took that into consideration. And, and like, in that, that's a, that's a situation too, that, like. I mean, I, I would have no problem defending that to somebody, because they were looking to build a carport, they have a big giant parklot, and they were saying they need to put a carport right next to this guy's property, and the guy didn't want his property, he didn't want that there. So they completely never did.
So there are a lot of things to consider, it's not so easy to say follow.
Right, right.
You know, to be fair to people sometimes, you know.
But people don't understand that either, because, like, we're, we're thinking about all the different cases, and like, somebody's here, and they, they have one case.
Yeah, that's why you get to be the bad guy sometime. And Linda, to your point about a topography situation, go to the top of Breckinridge Road. Do you know who Tony Anstauski is?
No.
Okay, well, there's a, if you go Breckinridge, it's on the left-hand side, it's the highest. Hill, house on the top, I think. He got a variance 25 very years ago to build a garage that's too close to the road.
Oh, yeah, I know which means.
Because of the steepness behind it, it would have cost him a billion dollars to fill that, to be able to build it, so that one made sense for topography. But if you, if you look at that, the criteria for variance, it's almost impossible to meet it. And that's the way it's supposed to be.
Shouldn't be easy.
No, if it was, and if it was easy, then we wouldn't need zoning vials. Just throw them out the window and say, do whatever you want.
That would be your preference.
And then you guys would yell at this big pain job, you know?
So.
With all the time to make it.
Yes, it is.
We need to. Do I, do we need to make them, to make.
Yeah.
To leave, the building commissioner. To the board, to the zoning board.
I don't think you can.
I think we do need to make a motion to accept the minutes. Um, I will make a motion to accept the minutes presented by a member of Linda Leduc, and the edits, verified by us, and submitted them. Um, I don't think, I don't think we have any other. Getting a handle on that for us.
Um, for my upcoming draft, if I need to do a Zoom from Ireland, I can do that. Because I'm going to, even on the 18th. I'm going to be Zoom as well. So I'm going to.
I've heard that meeting before. The stat.
It's a hard place.
You want your chair? Like me?
Do you want to, do you want to pull an alternate for those, or do you want, you know? We can find out that, I, um.
Talk to Alex, so he knows, gets you set up.
Yeah.
And if you, if you've got a post meeting, that is a Zoom meeting.
If we continue this, and if, since we've continued this one, can we, can we take it, can we go to the laser if we want to?
I can. I believe that's an option, but I'm not optimistic. Oh, what's it, I think you'd be better off to just. Have people come here, maybe they can. And that's something too, you guys need to realize, get whatever information you need. Don't just assume that what you're getting is, is good enough. Um, anything that's close. Health.
It feels pretty close.
Well, I mean, if, what I'm talking, if it's two inches.
Yeah.
That's, that can make all the difference in the world to what you guys are deciding, so. Anything that's. Within a certain tolerance, say, look, we got to have a survey. Because we can't, you can't make a decision. That, as I said this afternoon, you can't make a good decision with bad information.
Right, or incomplete.
So. And you, that, that's, the onus is on the applicant, why you could do it, whatever you need.
And how against have presented false information.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, most people won't do that, they think they, what the information they've got is the real deal, but it's not necessarily so. In town and hammers, you breathe that you want to build something over there, first thing they say is, oh, it's rare.
He's performing up.
Well. Yeah, well, I did tell the building commissioner, we were started over there, you're my best salesman.
It's almost like a. But I mean, you're never, you're never in the wrong, having an accurate prediction.
Well, the difference in consultation. One applicant here presented detailed drawings and specs. That's what we need.
Yeah.
In every case.
And the other thing that you probably would want. Is a rendering of what it's going to look like.
We do get those.
Well, we do get those, and we demand those, there's two different stories. Because that's going to have an impact on how it's going to impact the next.
I think pay based. What I'm hearing.
Yes.
It's more begging.
Well, probably so, you might increase double your salary.
Not worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess most situations, you're probably. Are you seriously suggesting that we need more money?
Oh, I'm seriously suggesting.
You are.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're like, you know, this situation is like, you definitely where someone does it, because they're, they think they're like, right, they can, they're like, right. They're actually like, barking their house, and then trying to bark, like, like, like the house, like, like, um. Yeah, like building a garage, they, they get some.
Searching for.
Because they need to know where they were.
Yeah.
They need to know what they fall into setback.
Yeah.
So it all, it all ends up in the same, the same reasons.
And, yeah.
Survey you've actually got to handle. So you can go with.
It's a volunteer town, and there's a point where that's not sustainable in this legal environment.
Yeah, well, it's not sustainable financially, so we start with what we've got. The system that we have.
Tough thing is finding people with high qualifications for a zoning board, like, being the National General Contractor, or, you know, I mean, I used that when I presented myself to come onto the board, like. Not everyone is going to come from a building background. Not everybody asked you, not every zoning lawyer wants to be in a zoning board, you know?
I've been on the boards since 2007. And it's gotten increasingly demanding. And more details, law requirements. More lawyers. It's very difficult, I mean, Henry brought this up a long time, very difficult for this volunteer board to sit in front of high-powered attorneys and developers. I mean, you can just imagine. It's, it's a hundred pound gorilla.
Oh, we can imagine.
Started doing what I knew, competing with boards, it was the exact, that was me, I felt like they were the almighty and I knew nothing.
There's some of that too, we got.
Yeah, and so it all just comes with time. The more you do it, the more you learn, hopefully. And then you can deal with that. If you, if you know the rules, then you needn't be fearful of these people, just because they get paid big money. And they can talk and talk down and whatever, doesn't mean you have to listen.
This is true, but they have legal knowledge, they're not paying lawyer, that is critical.
Yeah, and, and some of this. Is, you need to understand that people have aspects of it, something you've got to go with your guts.
Guts is not the direction you need to go. Are we?
And that's it?
Yeah.
Do we? Let's go.